Brings us to item 5.2, which is public comment. Pam, if you would please read the public comment statement and then I'll give some instructions.
Because the board wants to hear the viewpoint of the public, we have scheduled time during the regular board meetings for comments from citizens. The board has set aside an unlimited time for public participation prior to the business portion of each meeting on the first and third Wednesday of the month. The time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Each individual is only recognized once. The board does not respond to comments or questions. Thank you.
Thanks Pam. I will run a timer on my watch here for the three minutes. And Pam has a 30-second card that she'll hold up when there's 30 seconds remaining so that you know to wrap up. And I'll let you know when you have 10 seconds and then when your time's up, I will thank you and ask you to move on. We have 20 in-person public comment tonight and we have, I believe, about a dozen call-in. So we'll start with the in-person. I think, do we know, Mike? Do we know, is there anyone outside waiting to do public comment? No. Okay, so everyone's in here. So the way I'll work it is I'll call three names at a time, kind of the first, second, third, and you can kind of line up in the middle aisle there so that you can get ready when it's your turn. So first up tonight, I have Melinda Hummel. Oh, and state your name and your address, please, when you come up. First up, I have Melinda Hummel, then May Sora Selly, and then Kaylee Anderson.
I live off of County Road 4 in Berthoud. I have four kids, two of which attend a school in the district. So let's take a numerical approach to the issue at hand, the safety of our children and the need for them to wear masks. Using the 2021 August American Academy of Pediatrics and the Children's Hospital Association's Children and COVID-19 State Data Report, relating this data to our district and assuming that the cumulative number of children tested were to double and accounting for the Delta variant being two times more contagious, we get that approximately 12.8% of the 16,000 students in the district get tested this year. That would mean 2,048 children in our district would be tested in the next year and of those assume 35.2% for a total of 721 positive COVID-19 cases. Then a total of eight children would be hospitalized with COVID-19 and zero would die in our district. Now, if this is an accurate prediction and assume a consistent spread, we should have approximately 150 positive cases by the end of this week and as of this afternoon, we were at 131. Most parents outside tonight graduated from this district or a surrounding district. Were they not taught to think critically as one of the standards for graduating? Has this district really been failing children for that long? I don't think so. Let them make the choices for what is right for their families. There is too much data published by the CDC and NIH that suggests that there is no significant difference in transmission of viruses using masks. One NIH peer-reviewed article states, "As a result of the discomfort caused by face masks, the subjects tend to touch the face masks at frequent intervals and it can lead to contamination of the hands leading to more disseminated infections. Essentially, wearing face masks would likely tend to increase the rate of infection as children are touching their faces constantly." Ask any teacher in one of your poorly ventilated and hot classrooms how often children touch and/or play with their face masks. I read an article sent out by UC Health Today, "COVID-19 in Kids Answering the Most Important Questions." That reads, "For the Delta variant, they're not getting sicker, just more likely to catch it." The doctor goes on to state, "The goal of education at that age is social interaction, but it is hard to learn to read people's emotions when they have masks on. We are going to see school-aged kids behind in these social interactions, so we need to be watching those kids closely to make sure they are socially okay." She then goes on to say, "A majority of her patients present with a fever and runny nose and the child may or may not have a cough." So we're risking all children's social, emotional health for the likely of the majority of a small fraction of them getting a runny nose and fever, just like the flu has for most of our lives. I understand that COVID-19 is a real virus that is affecting some people in very real ways. However, this reaction is so over the top from what has happened throughout history. It's almost never going to go away at this point. So what do we do? Hide in our houses for the rest of time? Because as all healthcare workers will tell you, you have a virus, there's nothing we can do but treat the symptoms. Masks are as effective as when my son asked me to put a Band-Aid over his bruise. It serves no other purpose than to make him think I've done something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
May Sora Selly, 961 North Horse Street in Berthoud. The fact I'm here means you have failed the families of Berthoud and Loveland. The fact they are coming to me, a trustee of Berthoud, is evidence that you are not doing your job, which is to listen and act on their behalf. The suffering of hundreds of families this last week keeps me up at night. The domino effect of your decision to deny parents their constitutional right to health choices of their children has already had major implications. County health stats are not our god. And elected officials are not our god. You're playing god with people's lives. The psychological warfare of silencing our children is coming against 100% of families of their children right now. And that is far more egregious than the current 0% COVID fatality rate in all of Laramore County for anyone under the age of 25. To parents, I say, for the future of America and the freedom of your children, hold the line. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. I find this board in violation of the Constitution of the United States of America. Because you no longer represent the will of the vast majority of parents in your district, I am calling for your immediate resignation.
None of you have responded to my emails, but I've sent all of these documents that are not just from pissed-off parents like myself. And I'm just going to say one thing before I get going. Every single time you touch your face mask and take a drink, you are contaminating your mask. So every time you do that and every time a child does that in the classroom, it is pathetic. Your example that you're doing right now is absolutely pathetic. Okay. This is from the CDC website. I've sent you this multiple times. This is the only response I got. The health and safety of our students and employees are always a priority and we continue checking on stats daily. Well, this is from INIOSH, the National Institute of Occupational Health and Safety. You know what they say? This is 81. 81 masks that have been recalled. You know why they've been recalled? Counterfeit, recalled masks. 80 of these have been made in China. Guess what ones you are handing out to our children in schools? This is one of them. I also want to say thank you to all the teachers and staff that have been sending me screenshots and copies of the masks you guys use in school because on a call, they can't provide that information. Any of you guys that are blindly trusting this one, guess what the main ingredient in this mask is made of? Fiberglass. How many children are getting nosebleeds? Because you are forcing this on children. These, I've sent you these. If anyone can look, it's on the CDC website. This is on the CDC website. There's 81 masks that are not allowed in the country, but what? You can't find some that are made in the United States? You have to order in bulk from China? It is pathetic. There are so many masks and kids with nosebleeds. What? We have to get a 501 order because you think you can tell parents what's good for their children? You think five-year-olds can have nosebleeds so you can feel better about touching your face mask? And look, you're the only one that you actually made Icon Pack in the two meetings. You don't even look at anybody. And then last time, when Mr. Blake Law came up here, what did you do? You threw your face mask off, stood up like you were going to confront him? Oh, because when you want to be heard, you take your mask off, but none of the kids can and teachers can? There are 11 teachers in 11 different schools and staff that provided me different masks. Nine of them are counterfeit and are not even legally allowed to be sold in the United States. And you can look that up on the CDC website. It is right there. But if you actually did research for two seconds because you actually cared about the science of this, you would know that.
Or read the box.
Yeah, read the damn box.
Do you want to say anything? 00, 2% of children die, kids can die from COVID, but 0.5% drown. So do you want us to now
In seconds.
wear life jackets and have like a lifeboat at every, like, complex? Next up is Kristen Elliott. Kristen Elliott, Julie Brown, and Thomas Capon. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Kristen Elliott, Julie Brown, and Thomas Capon.
Hi, my name is Kristen Elliott. I live in Heron Point and I have three children in Thompson School District. I wanted to talk about the facts, but I know there's going to be a ton of parents that come in here and present the facts about the data and how masks harm children. We are an educated and readily collaborative community. I wanted to do the same thing, but it's obvious you don't care about the facts. I did not know that about the masks. That's just more information that we're learning every day. Following the science is not indicative of following the narrative, apparently. And now you've lost our trust in every single one of you. Thompson School District did the best they could last year. We all got on board and we were behind you. However, nearly a year and a half later, there are no changes in the outcomes of COVID, no matter what you want to say about the vaccine or masks. My concern is this board is effectively prescribing a medical device for my child that is making her sick. My child's nose runs every time she wears a mask. You are effectively making her body trigger an immune response. Are you trying to make our children sick?
Yes.
Is the next step to mandate vaccines if the county recommends it?
Yeah.
If we are going to allow you to mandate masks without the authority to do so, are parents ready for that? Only sick people are prescribed medication by their personal doctors at their discretion. I understand you are following a theory, but that theory puts harm on our children in more ways they are at risk to getting or spreading or even dying of COVID. A year and a half later, we do not have the child death that everyone keeps talking about and we have all most likely been exposed to COVID by now. Positive tests are not a death sentence. That is the science that's being ignored. You are not even telling parents what we need to do to make masks come off or when or what the expectations are. There has been little to no communication about the plan. So how are we supposed to react and trust you? I will not send my child to school until this mandate has an opt-out method. If the district is not giving me, if the district is not giving me an option, then the district has essentially left my child without the ability to attend school here.
Yeah.
I also want to mention the plan and the money being given to the district. Why did Thompson, why did TSD effectively take this money without parent input and put a plan in place that punishes the healthy and does not directly mitigate COVID or that of a majority of our students today? That will not even benefit from that. It takes time to build infrastructure like ventilation, hand washing stations, and even adding AC to these buildings. The plan may be great for children in the future, but if they are unmasked, as the plan stands today, it does not help them.
Next up is Julie Brown.
My name is Julie Brown. I live at 205 Glacier View Place. I've had students in the Thompson Valley School District for over 20 years. Last meeting was my first meeting I'd ever attended and I have to say I left with shock and awe. It's not what I expected a school board meeting to be. I was saddened for the children and the burden that we're placing on our children, such things like if they don't wear their masks, they don't care about other people, they don't care about Grandma and Grandpa. And I was upset about the number of senior citizens that got up and spoke about masks, not because they don't have a right to speak about masks, but how that the children were going to bring the virus home and how the children needed to be masked. And yet, I thought, after that, I thought, my goodness, this is a population, and I have elderly parents, this is a population that has the ability to isolate and stay at home or, you know, be away from other people. There is absolutely nothing that cannot be delivered to your doorstep right now, yet they put the burden on the children to mask all these children, cover their faces, and make them breathe their waste all day long. I couldn't believe it. I was like, what? And I thought, I know I'm going to be unpopular for saying this, but I'm not sure who's being selfish. That's a selfish point on mine. The other thing, and we should protect the vulnerable. I'm not saying we shouldn't. They have every opportunity to be protected, but I'm not sure it's at the cost of covering the faces of our children. The other thing that I observed, and I did observe through the whole thing, and this week it's different. Every time one of you spoke last week, you did remove your mask, with the exception of Jarrett. You didn't remove your mask the whole time, so much so that when Pam tried to speak once, Laura, you asked her to remove her mask. Now, why would you do that? The reason is, is that so you can communicate effectively. When you, now, think of the teachers, when the children are trying to see them and communicate. Think of the teacher, when the students are trying to see the teachers. Think of the children when they're trying to communicate with themselves. You cannot communicate effectively. Laura, I've watched your glasses fog up the entire time. That's what happens. I wear glasses. I wore a mask for a year. Not only that, but the gases that go up into your eyes sting your eyes until your eyes drip. So I'm telling you that if we don't allow our children to communicate with each other, you gradually stop communicating. That's what's going to happen. And I'm not sure we understand that this is going to affect a generation. So please, please, think critically on this.
And before Thomas speaks, I would just like to correct one thing or just put one fact out there.
I didn't hear enough. No, no. Let them talk. We've heard enough from you all.
Our turn. Your turn.
I would like to
No. Break your mask off. Boo. Can your roof cord?
The reason we remove our
Not going to turn to talk.
Not going to turn to talk.
Recession, please.
The reason, and I would like your attention and your silence, please. The reason, sir, I'm going to have to ask you to leave if you can't sit down and let other people take their turn and talk. Thank you.
This is my building, my electricity. I pay your wages.
It's a volunteer position. Let her talk so we can move on.
Yes, please. Thank you.
What I would like to say is that the reason we have taken our masks off is because these meetings are streamed via public audio and visual, okay? They have asked us to take our masks off because these mics don't pick it up to stream it to all the people out there. That's the only reason, okay?
It's interesting. You can't talk, I can't talk in class. Our eyes are arguing with her. I can't hear her.
I can't see her faces. How do I know who trusts? I don't trust masks.
Move on. She made her point. Let's move on.
Thank you. That's all I want to say. I'm going to go round up the rest of my board. We're going to come back in here. And if there is another display like this, we are going to start asking people to leave.
No. I will say no.
Thank you. I'm going to wait for my one more board member and then you'll have your turn. And while we're waiting, just to get ready, the next three up will be Tim Duffy, Laura Baldwin, and Jenny Misler, I think it is. Thank you. Thomas.
My name is Thomas Capon. I live in Gateway Park in Berthoud, Colorado. The product of Thompson School Districts and the Berthoud Schools. Went to Berthoud Elementary, to Turner Middle School. I graduated from Berthoud High School. Mr. Boyd was one of my teachers. And I have to say, I'm very disappointed in what these schools have become. I moved my family to this city to go to these schools because of the experience I had there. And this experience for them has not been the same as what I had. The teachers are not the same. The staff is not the same. There's been quite a few people before me that spoke much more eloquently than I can about the masks. They've brought in many more facts than I have. So I'm going to talk about the actions that have taken place at the middle school since, that had occurred to my daughter. My daughter's in seventh grade. She was asked to wear a mask. She does not believe in that. She went to school without a mask. She was moved to the library. Did her time there. She went to school the second day without a mask. She was taken to the library again. This is when she decided that she wanted to stand up for herself and I encouraged it. She quoted the 14th Amendment. On her own, she researched it, found it, saw what you guys were doing and violating her constitutional rights. When she asked the teacher why, the teacher snatched that piece of paper out of her hand and told her that she was a nasty little child, that she was going to kill all of her classmates and all of the teachers in this room, and she was a terrible, terrible person. They made over 200 kids sit in the Turner Middle School library and write an essay of why they should be wearing a mask while being continually told how terrible they were. In that library, if you're telling me that you are in favor of the empowerment of children, the safety of these children, to build these children, the things that were said to them and done to them in that library does not follow your mission statement. The safety of these children is not what you have in mind because you are violating the fire code of that occupancy. 50 feet per person, 50 square feet per person has to be allotted in that library. Over 200 kids, that library needs to be over 10,000 square feet. I can tell you that because I'm a certified fire inspector.
Yeah.
You are not, you do not have these children's best safety interests at heart. It is very disappointing in the way the teachers have bullied my children when they're the ones who's supposed to keep them safe from the bullies. You say that it's concerning that the kids who have to wear masks
10 seconds.
are going to be bullied by their fellow classmates. But my student chose to leave your school because she did not feel safe going to that environment. She knew that she could not learn in that environment and she is now withdrawn from your district and she will not
Thank you.
be returning.
I believe I was next. I'm Tim Duffy, 4019 Burr Oak here in Loveland. I have three kids in the Thompson School District. I'm not going to go over any facts. You guys have been bombarded with that. You've done your own research. You believe what you're going to believe. But what I do want to say is, at the last meeting, you posted August 19th that mandatory face mask will be required for students, staff, visitors, for pre-K through 8 and all visitors who go to those buildings, okay? I told my daughter, I know we don't like it, but we have to wear a mask now. You're in middle school. So we followed your rules again, okay? Just like we've tried to for the last two years. What I am going to tell you is some stories that are happening in Thompson School District because I don't know if you guys are aware. I was at a swim meet at Mountain View High School the other day. It was the middle of the meet, closer to the beginning. There was an announcement made that everyone in the swimming area must wear their masks. As the announcement was made, kids were standing in line, ready to compete in their event. I watched as they started to panic and run around because they were in swimsuits. Some kids went to their bags to grab masks, others picked up towels, t-shirts to cover their faces. Our children should not have the pressure and anxiety put on them. There was no information that the masks would be required during the swim meet for the swimmers or the visitors. This was not at a middle school. The swimmers were allowed to remove their masks while they swam, but expected to put them back on as soon as they exited the pool. If any of you have ever wore a swim cap, your ears are covered. So my daughter stood there with her hands behind her head, holding a mask on so she could watch her teammates compete. As I was sitting in the stands, someone came to me who did not identify themselves and said I must wear a face mask as a visitor. I informed her that the postings on the walls stated masked welcomed, but not required. I also informed her that the mask mandate was only for middle schools, not high schools. She told me that this was a middle school event and if I did not comply, she would shut down the event. How is this supporting our children? I also have a son who plays high school football and who was now told he must wear a mask at all times during practice if his helmet is off. When they take their helmets off, it's to get a drink. I'm sick of hearing it that if you don't like the mask rules, you don't have to participate. I'd like to say, if you're not comfortable letting your children go to school or play sports, you don't have to participate. sports, you don't have to participate.
Ten seconds.
I would also like to ask, who gave these people the power? Now, I'm getting this from my daughter, who said, "A parent went to the referees at the swim meet and said, 'Everyone needs to be in masks.'" There's no parent who can make that rule for me and my children.
Next up is Laura Baldwin.
My name is Laura Baldwin. You guys have my address. I'm not comfortable giving it on YouTube. Um, I would like to start out by telling you that my five-year-old daughter was hospitalized for dehydration on Monday. She ended up getting a GI bug at school. I know that because she was the only one in our house that was symptomatic. She started having symptoms on Sunday after exposure in school on Thursday, Friday. The timeline fits pretty well. And we, we all know that GI viruses are transmitted by touching our face, by touching a dermy surface and touching our face. You guys are forcing her to touch her face more than she would be. Additionally, I was told by our principal, and I think it's pretty well published on the school board stuff, that you guys will help provide masks if their mask gets lost or dirty or whatever during the school day. You guys gave my five-year-old an adult-sized mask to wear. How in the hell is that supposed to work? When I went to pick her up, it's dangling below her chin, and she's forcing it up like this. Like, it's ridiculous. I would also like to bring up the dual immersion program that I very much commend Thompson School District for offering. I think it's an amazing program. I was very excited to get my, my daughter in it. The benefits that she will get throughout her life from that are absolutely amazing. But you guys are taking away all of the benefits by making her and her Spanish teacher wear a mask. She has come home crying that she hates her Spanish teacher because she doesn't understand her. And on top of that, now she can't even see her face. She can't even see her smiling at her. It's disgusting. My son will be aging out of the Foothills Program in October and is supposed to be in one of your guys' programs for an IEP because he has a speech delay. Please tell me how he's supposed to learn how to talk when his teacher and he have to wear a mask. It's ridiculous. The, the developmental issues that you guys are causing our children are absolutely asinine. And because none of you guys could stand up and put out a survey for us to take, I did. I paid $100 out of my pocket to create a survey on surveymonkey.com that was non-biased. All of my questions were yes or no, or positive to negative answers, and it has stayed pretty steadily. Right now, I've got 422 responses. 59% say no mask mandate, and 41% say yes to a mandate. The part that really intrigued me, because I'm able to kind of filter these results down, is that of the 422 responses, 28 of them were district employees. 57% of those district employees said that they should wear a mask. 43% said that they shouldn't. But when you follow those in all the questions, how it affects health, how it affects social skills, how it affects learning, every single number was higher as negative. So these teachers think that our kids should be wearing masks, but they are fully recognizing that none of the benefits that you guys are quoting actually exist.
Ten seconds.
They all say that it's negatively affecting social skills, that it's negatively affecting health. Your guys as teachers are saying that it is negatively, negatively affecting their health.
And then I have Tom Cagiano and Heather Stappelli.
Uh, my name is Jenny Mishler. Again, I'm not gonna give my full address out, but I am in Berthitt. I also have a middle schooler at Turner Middle School. Um, I graduated from Thompson Valley in 1999, so I've been in this district as long as I've been alive, essentially. I wanna call to the rest of the board because it, it appears that we can't reason with Lori. I've watched you after every speaker has gotten up here, and the only people that you've recognized and made eye contact with are the ones who start yelling. The rest of your board members are actively engaging, writing things down, taking notes. At least I feel like they're hearing us. You, on the other hand, we've all worked for bosses that rule with an iron fist and a dictatorship, and that seems to be what's gone wrong here. So I'm pleading to the rest of you to do what's right.
Fire.
My eighth grader was so appalled at what was happening, who's an only child, by the way, so you limited all of her social interaction last year. Sports canceled, 4H canceled, school canceled, other than online. I'm a single working parent. She spent all last year in her bedroom, alone with her dog, in school. We're grateful to have her back in school, and she's doing her best to wear her mask because that's what I've asked her to do, is to follow the rules regardless of the fact that I think they are ridiculous. I work in healthcare. Have any of you sitting up here had to sit in a hot classroom with a mask on for seven hours a day, or nine if you ride the bus? Most of you are retirees. My guess is that you're sitting in an air-conditioned living room without a mask on.
Yeah.
My eighth grader organized a sit-in as soon as we found out that this was happening because she wanted to stage a walkout. I told her that was unsafe. My eight-year-old feel, my eight, my eighth grader feels unheard. So I, as an adult, am here to stand up for her because what you've all done to our kids is wrong. Can you imagine being in kindergarten, learning your phonics, and trying to sound them out with a mask on? Or the, poor lady who just spoke with a child with a speech delay. Are you hearing any of this?
No.
I started a Facebook group where I asked, because I've heard so much about people un-enrolling their students in Thompson School District. In one day, I had a count of 40 kids that were either already unenrolled or were actively starting the un-enrollment process. So what will you do by Christmas time if that number doubles, triples, quadruples? What do you do next year for tax money? How are your student, how are your teachers going to get paid?
Yeah.
In my entire, my, my student's entire curriculum, her entire educational career, I have never had a negative comment from a teacher or a phone call from a principal. This last week, I've had three calls from a vice principal. The latest was not that she wasn't wearing her mask because I asked her to do her best. It was because her nose was exposed. I would guess that the vice principal's job description has items in it far more important than telling my student to keep it over her nose. Again, I'm in healthcare. The last thing I will lead you with is I'm not some anti-masker or crazy anti-vaxer. I myself am fully vaccinated. I want that choice for my child. You don't get to make that for my kid.
Tom Cagiano is next. And then, and then Heather Stappelli, and then Brian Riddle.
Tom Cagiano, County Road One in Berthitt. And I'm the grandfather of some young children. I expect that you will all hate me.
No.
But-
We love you, Tom.
I love you too. But anyway-
You have your rights too.
I do have my rights. And everybody has their rights.
So do I.
Right. And part of our rights is that we should all be able to speak without shouts from the audience.
If we would be listened to.
Well, except I'm, I'm speaking. You should respect-
Sir-
I'm sorry.
Tom-
-my chance to speak.
Thank you.
Okay. So anyway, I have the opposite opinion. And I hope COVID, if you check on the news, it's killed, what, you don't believe in COVID?
No.
It's, it's killed 387 pe-, kids in this- Yeah, you should let me speak. Are you so afraid to hear an opposite opinion? So anyway, I hope that none of your children die from it. It's killed three, like I s- They what?
I said I have it.
That's great. That's great. It doesn't mean, so you're, you're lucky you didn't die from it. I know people that have died from it. People do die. It's, it's part of-
Would you please let him speak? Would you please, would you please let him speak?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, it's not gonna happen. But anyway, I, I know you're trying to all do your job. Clearly, from everything I heard tonight, there's some room for improvement.
Yeah.
Certainly, there were a lot of scary things that got mentioned. And I guess the superintendent has a job tomorrow to make some phone calls and speak to some people and find out more of what's going on. And, um, but this pandemic is a big problem. It's, we've never seen anything like this before. Everybody's caught off guard by it. You're blaming the school district for keeping your kids home during a national stay-at-home mandate. It's not their fault. It's the, it was the government mandating that. And part of that saved a lot of people's lives. So it's not such a terrible thing to try to save people's lives. People are dying every day. Granted, it's, things are getting better now because we have better treatments and people are vaccinated, but, yeah, it's, it's really annoying to try to speak and have people shout.
You're doing great, Tom. Keep talking.
Yeah. It's really annoying. You guys really should learn some respect for people.
You too.
I have respect. I didn't shout.
No, it was not you.
I didn't shout. I didn't say anything-
Ten seconds.
-when anybody else was speaking.
Please let her finish.
I am finished now.
Thank you. Next is Heather Stappelli, Brian Riddle, and Chloe Riddle.
Okay, so I'm not as eloquent as all these other people, so my name is Heather Stappelli. Yes, I have a cold. No, it's not COVID.
You're sick, stay home.
Oh, really? Okay. Oh my God, seriously? What are we showing our kids here? Oh my God, you're like five years old. You're screaming at people while they're trying to talk. Give me a break. Okay, so Heather Stappelli, I'm on Chokey Ferry, I'm in Berthitt. I have a daughter, five years old, has autism, wears a mask just fine. She also has a speech delay. And guess what? She's still learning. She's still getting through it. So I don't see, I think everybody just needs to take a breath for five seconds and do what's best for the community. Because as far as I'm concerned, with rights comes responsibility.
Rights?
Okay. I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, Heather. Next is Brian Riddle and then Chloe Riddle.
Show us the proof the masks work.
Oh my God.
Show us the document.
Please. Please, please let the speakers speak on either side of this, either side of this. They deserve to be heard just like everyone else before them and after them. So please, Mr., uh, Mr. Riddle?
Good evening. My name is Brian Riddle, and I live on Biscayne Court in Berthitt. I am here tonight, as are many other parents, to discuss the mask mandate. First, let me say, this is not an issue against our teachers or our schools. This is an issue against you who made this decision. Many teachers and staff have privately encouraged all of us to keep up the fight because, in fear of losing their jobs, they are unable to speak in opposition. I have twins who are 11 years old and go to Turner Middle School. Every day since the mask mandate went into effect, I pick them up after school, and my son looks like a beet. His face is red, he is sweating, and he complains of a headache. Why is that? Because he must sit in a school building that has no AC with a mask on, breathing in his own hot air for seven hours a day. According to the Thompson School District website, as of September 1st, there are 117 students and 19 staff members, for a total of 136 people who have tested positive. Of these 34 are middle school students and staff, 39 are elementary students and staff. Also, according to the district website, enrollment of students impacted by this current mandate is 10,273. This equates to a 0.71% of the middle school and elementary school population combined. Let me be clear. Current positive results against the current school enrollment is less than 1% of the population of elementary and middle school students. Our kids' mental well-being is suffering. Our kids' education is suffering. Families are suffering because you feel like you can parent our kids and make decisions which are non-education-related decisions that impact our kids without caring about the true, long-term impact on these children. Ms. Ward, you have said in closed-door emails to the governor that the kids who choose to wear a mask are being bullied in the school. It's quite the opposite. A friend of ours, her daughter had a note put in her Turner, in her backpack at Turner Middle School, saying, and I will quote, "I hope you and your anti-mask mom die from COVID." You are dividing these children, which will then teach division in society for generations to come. Now, people are gonna say, "The decision I make for my child will impact what happens to their child," because my child, who doesn't wanna wear a mask, might unwillingly transmit COVID to their child or family members. If masks are worn, then those who choose to wear one can. The CDC has said that while wearing masks are strongly encouraged, it does not statistically stop the spread of COVID-19 in numerous published articles. The box of masks identical to those that you provide my children, and I quote, "This product is an ear-lute mask. This product is not a respirator and will not provide any protection against COVID-19 or other viruses or contaminants." If the virus is so deadly, why are there not hazmat bins to properly dispose of these said masks at the doors in every school? In closing, I beg, and I plead with you, do not just do what others do in mandating these masks.
Ten seconds.
Listen to the kids who are being impacted. Look at the kids and think about the long-term impacts. Be the leaders in the movement of choice. Be the leaders in the movement of putting our children's mental and physical well-being first.
Chloe Riddle, Chloe Riddle, and then Brianna Kennel, Kennel, I'm sorry, and Marilyn Heller.
Hi, my name is Chloe Riddle, and I live on Biscayne Court in Berthitt. I feel like we shouldn't have to wear masks because it affects other students as much as, as it affects me, and I come home with a headache every day because of it. The mask makes it so we, we can barely breathe. People are just faking taking a drink of water so we can take off our mask and get fresh air. When teachers are talking with masks on, it makes it hard to hear them and understand what they are saying and meaning. It makes it hard for me to learn in a hard, harder environment of middle school. Whenever I see my brother, he is always sweating and has a headache. I think about how the school has no AC, and he comes home saying he doesn't wanna wear a mask because of that, and asks if there's something we can do. I can, I tell him that I wish I could do something for him, but there's really nothing we can do until masks are eliminated. Until then, we are going to have to deal with it, sadly, but it's not our choice. Please, if you don't want to listen to our parents, listen to us as students who this really affects. Please, do take away with the mask mandate. Thank you.
Got Brianna, and then Marilyn, Brianna? Brianna? And then Marilyn Heller, and then Andy Crisman.
Hi, I'm Brianna Miller, or Brianna Kennel, and I live in Gateway Park in Berthitt. And you are in a roomful of mama bears and papa bears, and we are riled up because we do want the safety of our kids. And masks, I get that that was the thing last year. That's what we were told, we're safe. They are not safe right now. They are actually causing respiratory infections from having to wear them. So we are going to create sicknesses that weren't there, to protect a sickness that they're not really going to be harmed from. They may get it, they may get a runny nose, but they're not in that high-risk category. And we're going to make them sick by wearing these masks. I have a five-year-old. He loves school, and we moved to Berthitt because this was the best school district in the state. We chose to come here, and I was so excited for him to go, and I do not wanna put him in this position, but I have told him, "Please don't wear your mask. I want you to stay, to stay healthy." And he'll wear one if someone tells him to, and I don't want someone else telling him to because I'm his mom, and I know what's gonna keep him safe and healthy. We have ultraviolet light air purifiers that I can plug into the wall, and there's been a lot of good, um, outcome with putting something like that. So I'm offering a solution, something that we can all come together on, putting some type of UV air purification, air purification system. These, uh, systems were $40 to plug into the wall. You can put a couple of them in a classroom, then they shouldn't have to make them wear their masks. And, but the masks are also creating that hostile environment that, you know, there, those kids are just learning to read facial expressions, um, and they, they can't understand what their teachers are saying. They can't see if they're, you know, if they're doing good. And so, like many of my peers over here, the hostile environment is being created by, you know, other people telling them that they're going to be harming other kids by not wearing one. And I just don't want that on my kids' conscience. Because we are fighting for the physical and mental health. This is very key, the mental health of our children. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Marilyn Heller?
I'm Marilyn Heller, and I live on Glen Isle in Loveland. I wanted to say that I think the disrespect that the anti-maskers show to the, uh, our set, the example they're setting is a very bad example for our students. And the role model that they're showing is very- And the role model that they're showing is very detrimental to education and to our community. And I want to thank the school board for all the countless volunteer hours you put into our district. Thank you.
Andy Crisman, and then Kathy Klopfer? Oh, sorry, Katie Klopfer. Yeah, you're right. And Tom Whitting, Tom Whitting.
Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the Board of Education. I'm Andy Crisman, 809 Colorado Avenue in Loveland. I'm the parent of two Thompson students, a music teacher, and I'm president of the Thompson Education Association. I do want to thank you for thoughtful efforts in attempting to keep our kids and our staff safe and healthy. These changing waters, and you're navigating them thoughtfully and empathetically, and I thank you. In particular, I want to thank the board tonight and the Facilities Department for bringing the results and recommendations from the cooling audit to the regular board meeting tonight. I believe that of the strategies we have implemented to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, improved ventilation and filtration might be one that is permanent. There are so many advantages and so few drawbacks to this strategy. The most significant drawback, however, is the impact on our building temperatures. Since we need to pull outside air into our buildings all day long, it's harder to keep our buildings cool than it used to be. I hope you will consider acting soon on the cooling purchases the Facilities Department recommends, even tonight, so that students and staff feel relieved as soon as possible. Having said that, I note that many other buildings that lack cooling are not on the list that you're presented tonight. I hope you will consider expanding this program to benefit students and staff at Ivy Stockwell, Laurine Edmondson, Turner, and the many others who are experiencing the effects of record heat this August. As far as other COVID mitigation strategies go, I do encourage the board to continue to monitor public health conditions and requirements and then make the adjustments necessary to help keep our students in school with a minimum of quarantines. One of our middle school teacher members said yesterday that her hope for the year was that students would recommit to the learning process. We felt that students were perhaps a bit scared to commit to meaningful learning opportunities because they didn't want to get into it and to buy in only to get sent home again. While I know we can't control for every valuable in this pandemic, we can do a lot to keep our kids in school. Thanks again for your dedication to our students' success.
Thank you. Katie, Tom Whitting, and then Kelly Calabrese?
Corrected you. Everyone says Kathy.
No, that's okay. It says Katie here.
No, it's okay. It's that invisible H. It gets everybody. I'm Katie Klopfer, and I live in Berthoud, and I have five kids. I know these are unprecedented times for everybody. It's very unnerving. But you guys are placed here for a reason, to be here for a reason for this time. I'm here to request flexibility with the exemptions for masks or to make it a choice. Our family is a military family. We're probably the only active-duty military family in the area. Our kids have moved multiple times. This is my daughter's fifth school. And we got COVID last November. My husband and I were sick. Thankfully, we were okay, and thankfully, the kids were fine. They didn't get affected at all. But my children were so terrified, and I blamed that on us because we had the TV on and the media, the fear in their eyes. They were crying in hysterics, thinking they were going to die. And I bring this story up because I'm sure many of us can relate to the real fear that is there. But I also have high-anxiety children. My daughter, when we moved to Colorado Springs when she was six, she developed disordered eating. It's like the fancy way for an eating disorder for a six-year-old. She eats a cupcake and does 100 push-ups. Her anxiety is high. We've been in therapy for years. My other daughter, she has attachment issues. Long story. My husband deployed right away, single mom, five kids, seven and under for six months. It was a very intense time. But because of our military situation, I have two kids with high anxiety. They're in constant states of anxiety if you look at where they are. They're always in fight or flight. My children have been in therapy. For them to take a deep breath physically hurts them because their muscles can't relax. Part of the therapy has been deep-breathing exercises with an app where it motions them and whatnot. For them, the masks create an immense amount of anxiety. This is taking where years of counseling that we have worked. I have been to, like I said, my daughter, this is her fifth school. We have been to many school districts. I've never inquired with the 504 because we've never had to because the teachers, the principal, and the staff have all been willing to work with us to make accommodations, to do on-time tests and whatnot, and they have all said it hasn't been necessary. But with this mask mandate, there was no warning. A 504 takes months, and now I have to bring records from multiple therapists from multiple states because we move so much. I don't think it's fair to throw in a mandate without any warning. There needs to be transparency. And there's a lot of us that do have kids. We're not one-size-fits-all. We're squiggles. We are all squiggles. So please consider the kids and allow exemptions, even without the 504, because it wasn't fair to us to have it sprung on. And it should be our choice. Thank you so much for listening to me, and I just wanted to say that we are giving our kids anxiety more than ever, and we need to be aware of their mental health more than anything right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you for your family service. Tom Whitting, Kelly Calabrese, and then our last one in person is Lydia Jordan.
Good evening. Tom Whitting. I live in Berthoud, Colorado. First of all, I'd like to start by saying thank you for saying the Pledge of Allegiance before we started this meeting. I appreciate that. I know a lot of people come up here and thank you guys for your service. I'm not going to do that. I don't think you guys have been serving us as parents or our students, our kids. Yeah, I think it's time. I have one quick question, and it's very simple, or comment, I should say. If you guys truly want to represent our kids and us as parents, this whole mask mandate, why don't you guys advocate to put it on the vote, on the ballot? Let us parents vote. I mean, this is a democracy after all, correct? I do believe so? Let us parents vote for our kids. Let us speak up for our kids. So again, thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Kelly, and then Lydia.
Hello, my name is Kelly Calabrese. I live at 1864 Cambridge Court in Loveland. I have two kids in the school district with you guys. I'd like to be on record stating my daughter can't breathe in a mask, and she's holding her own, and she is pushing through school right now and doing her thing. It's been a difficult week or two. I want to talk about other therapies out there for COVID-19. We were sick back in January, and we're able to get hydroxychloroquine, zinc, and azithromycin. We got it overnighted. We were pretty sick, and it got rid of our symptoms in two days. Two days. What you guys are doing to our kids is not right. There's other treatments out there. Do your research. Turn the mainstream media off. Do an in-depth research. Ivermectin works as well. Same thing. My friends and family are taking it. I want to know why our doctors aren't prescribing this right now. What's going on? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and Lydia Jordan.
Hi, my name is Lydia Jordan. I live on McComb Street in Berthoud. I just wanted to tell an interesting story. My daughter has been in the Thompson School District for a while. She started in the early childhood program in preschool. She started at Sarah Milner, and I remember that year she was sick quite a lot. You know, they're preschool kids. They get sick, touch their face and everything. Anyhow, we moved to Berthoud, and she moved to the early childhood program in Berthoud. At that year, I took note that my daughter had one cold, and it was a two-day duration, and I got confused because she had been sick a lot before then. I went and I spoke to the preschool teacher, and I asked her about the class and if kids were getting sick, and she said that she had a pretty healthy classroom, and I said, "What are you doing?" And she said, "We're washing our hands." In the beginning of when COVID started, our primary directive from the government and from the CDC was to wash our hands and to not touch our face. My daughter, she is in second grade now. When she was in kindergarten at BES, she had several colds. We had gotten that kind of nastygram from the district that she was about to be truant, which is not a very friendly letter. But, you know, a cold can last a while. She had the flu that year, too. I spoke with the teacher and asked them, and her and I were back and forth. Firstly, I spoke with Hannah, and I said to her, "I don't understand what's different. Are you washing your hands?" She said, "No." "Are you washing your hands before you eat lunch?" She said, "No." First grade came. She went back to school. It was a short amount of time because they were at home in front of their computers. And she went back, and I asked, and she got sick again. I asked her, "Are you washing your hands before lunch?" She said, "No." And then second grade, the same thing. The first week, they didn't wear masks. The second week, they wore masks, and she got sick twice after the masks were on, twice. She's been home with a sore throat. I just would like us to go back to basics and institute
Thank you.
washing hands instead of this false coverage of wearing a mask. That's all.
Next, we have, I believe, 11. Is it, Matt? Okay, we have 11 call-in. Public comment. We'll listen to those just straight through, please.
This is Mary Carrera calling. My last name is spelled C-A-R-R-A-H-E-R. I live at 737 West Fifth Street in Loveland, and my email address is M-A-R-Y-C-A-R-R-A-H-E-R at Comcast.net. That's no capitals, no dots. I would just like to say that I am very much in favor of masks for anyone in the school building, whether it is a teacher, a student, janitorial staff, support staff, and any individual in the building, in any of the buildings, for the students' benefit and for the teachers' benefit. It's clear that the Delta variant is highly contagious and that even vaccinated people have some level of risk and some level of being able to spread the illness themselves, even having been vaccinated. And with the children, many of them are at an age where they don't have a choice yet. They're not able to become vaccinated because they're underage. So I very much support it. I think it's in the best interest of everyone involved, and I really hope the school board will continue to take the necessary precautions to protect all those involved. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
This is Kathy Wilson, K-A-T-H-Y-W-I-L-S-O-N. My address is 1051 Coral Burst Drive, Loveland, Colorado, 80538. And my topic is just to support the decision for masks in the schools in the Thompson District. I want to applaud your choice with doing that because it's supported by science. It also models for the students how to be part of the social contract in a civilized society where you care about the health and safety of everyone in the community. I applaud you for modeling that for everybody and for having the students consider not only the health and safety of other students in schools, staff, and faculty, but also the wider community. As a senior in the city of Loveland, I very much appreciate doing what everybody can not to spread COVID. So thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Hilligoss. I live at 321 Webb Avenue in Fort Collins. My message concerns your mask policy. I have four grown children who have graduated from Thompson Schools, and now I have five grandchildren in the Pooter District. I just wanted to thank you for requiring masks. Not only are you keeping our children and our community members safer, as educators, you're also demonstrating the importance of using facts and data to make important decisions about health and safety. These are uncertain times, but one thing is certain. The facts and the data support the effectiveness of masks. And so, again, I say thank you.
Yes, my name is Lee Caggianno. That's C-A-G-G-I-A-N-O. My address is 23429 County Road 1 in Berthoud. I'm calling as a very concerned... The topic of this call is the necessity of having a mask mandate for our children in school, especially for the elementary-age kids who can't be vaccinated yet. There's just no reason that we wouldn't have a mask mandate. Our kids, the ICU beds are filling up. Our young children are dying from COVID, and it's so preventable. We can all just mandate everyone wears masks, and we can cut the risk factor for these kids. I mean, our responsibility to our children as educators, parents, community members is to educate them and keep them safe. And without masks, we are not keeping them safe. And we're going to increase our numbers, and we're going to be back to virtual learning. So I beg the board to please initiate a mask mandate for the school district. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Emma Howard Young. Howard Young is H-O-W-A-R-D-Y-O-U-N-G. My phone number is 970-231-1373, and I live at 128 Joaquin Causeill Road in Brimfield, Massachusetts. I'm a pediatrician. I was born and raised in Loveland and attended Thompson Schools from K through 12. And the education that I received there empowered me to go to medical school and pursue my passion for taking care of children. Now, in the midst of the COVID pandemic, I want to emphasize how critical wearing masks is for the student population. I personally have seen young infants, toddlers, and school-aged children admitted to the hospital for COVID infections, and some have been critically ill. The evidence consistently shows that masks are protective and life-saving, with no negative effects at all. The American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC are both strongly in favor of mandating masks for all school-aged children. It is our responsibility to protect the children of our community, and the Thompson Valley School District can have a critical role in that. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Marilyn Lemming, L-E-M-M-I-N-G. My address is 412 West Eighth Street, Loveland, 80537. Phone number 970-669-9405. I'm just going to, I was actually going to go to the meeting this year. I'm just going because I was actually going to go to the meeting this evening, but then I remember seeing pictures from the last meeting where people were not masked, and I don't want to be indoors at a meeting with unmasked people, even though I myself am vaccinated. Because I'm calling regarding the masking mandate, I think it's a great idea, I think especially for younger children who are not vaccinated, that to help control this virus in our community and to keep kids healthy and to also be able to keep parents at work because when children are exposed, parents then have to stay home with them for two weeks or something like that. So, I certainly am supportive of the mask mandate in our school district. I think it's for the safety of all, for children and for families, and also for parents in planning their lives. That's all I have to say. Thanks very much.
Hi, my name is Catherine Darby, D as in dog, A-R-B as in boy, Y. Address, 2583 Forsythia Drive, Loveland, 970-573-9857. All I would like to say today is that I believe that a compromise is possible, and I feel like by looking at the positive cases and the positive percentage rates, that we can implement a program similar to what Windsor's School District has, that if a individual school reaches over a 3% positive percentage rate, at that point, we mask the children for two weeks to allow for that rate to go down. I would like to now lift the positive percentage rates that I have based on the data from ThompsonSchools.org, which I have emailed to the board members as of 8/30/2021. K through 8, we had 62 positive cases. Total enrollment, 10,311 kids. That's a .6% positive percentage rate. Elementary schools, 34 positive cases. 6,863 students, .49% positive percentage rate. Middle school is at, for the pot middle schools, .9%. Berthoud Elementary, .88. BF Kitchen, 0. Big Thompson, 1. Bill Reed Middle, .91. Kerry Martin, 1.24. Centennial, .58. Conrad Ball, .88. Cottonwood Plains, .5. Coyote Ridge, 2.7. Garfield Elementary, .94. High Plains, K through 8, 0.0. Ivy Stockwell, .5. Lorraine Edmondson, 0. Lincoln, 0. Lucille Irwin Middle, 1.2. Mary Blair Elementary, 0.0. Monroe Elementary, 0.0. Nomacqua Elementary, 0.81%. Ponderosa, .82%. Riverview, K through 8, .64. Sarah Milner, .42. Trustcott, 0. Turner Middle, 1.01. Walt Clark, 1.35. And Wynona, 0%. By looking at these numbers, we can see that while the number of positive cases is going up, the percentage positive based on student enrollment is actually very minimal. And so, I ask that the board look at a compromise and consider following a plan that will make both parties neither happy nor unhappy and find somewhere in the middle. Thank you.
Jim Stimson, 2564 Eldorado, Loveland. The subject of my phone call is the current mask mandate. I ask that you continue to keep it in place for K through 8. I also ask that you please consider placing a mask mandate in for 9 through 12, based on the current numbers of positive cases we're seeing come out of the unmasked high school level. I'd also like to address a couple of other topics that I continue to hear brought up during these community public comment sections during the board meetings. We seem to hear the words freedoms, liberties, parents' choices used quite a bit during the public comment section. I think some community members may be a bit confused about those words because constitutional rights can be limited if a person is endangering others, and a person's liberties or freedoms end when you are knowingly risking the lives of others. And how do we know lives are being risked by ignoring public health orders or recommendations? Because COVID was the third-leading cause of death in the United States since 2020. If you were to combine all of the deaths from Alzheimer's, diabetes, suicide, kidney disease, and DUI-related accidents, they would not equal the total deaths of COVID in 2020. And I think it really bothers a lot of people in this community to hear public comments during these board meetings from community members acting like the COVID deaths are somehow insignificant and just part of life. Now, every one of us has the basic human right to live as healthy of a life as we choose. If you want to make poor personal health choices, like for instance, smoke, even unhealthy diet, not exercise, those would be your rights, your liberties, your freedoms, but you are not allowed to make poor health choices in public spaces that risk the health of others. So, has that relates to our children in school? Your children and my children cannot smoke in school. They cannot bring weapons to school. It's basic science and data, and some in the community and the country somehow keep attributing intelligent health choices to, quote, "living in fear," or, quote, "being scared." And I'm not sure how making intelligent health choices, like for instance, I choose to not smoke, I choose to eat healthy, I choose to exercise, does that somehow mean that I'm living my life in fear of heart disease or heart attack? No, it means I'm making intelligent health decisions based on science and data. So, board, please continue to filter out the noise. Understand, you have the majority of the district asking for you to continue to follow the experts' guidance from the CDC, the Surgeon General, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Children's Hospital Association, the Colorado Department of Health, and the Laramie County Department of Health. Thank you.
My name is Eric McDermott. I live at 2009 Blue Mountain Avenue in Berthoud, and I'm calling to comment on COVID-19 safety protocols in our schools. As we know, the Delta variant is surging in our country and our county. Per the Laramie County COVID-19 dashboard, Laramie County is currently considered high-risk and have a high level of community transmission. In other words, we're in the red. The number of COVID-19 patients has more than tripled since the beginning of August, and in the last week, Laramie County ICU's bed usage has hit 100%. This impacts everyone who needs intensive care, not just COVID patients. This pattern has borne up in our schools as well. I've already received notices indicating potential exposure of my middle school student for six of the first nine days of school. My high school student was potentially exposed on three of those same nine days. That's a lot of exposure. Because of the spread, the CDC and Laramie Health officials recommend that everybody eligible, which I won't get vaccinated as soon as possible, that everyone practice social distancing, and that everyone wear masks when gathering indoors or in crowded outdoor spaces. Now, I know that masks and vaccines are controversial in some quarters, and that's driven in part by misinformation spread on social media and proliferated by irresponsible media figures. But a virus does not care what party affiliation you have, what news program you watch, or whether or not you like wearing a mask. None of us like wearing a mask. This is a matter in which the board needs to consider the science and a recommendation of health officials, not unverified anecdotes or the popularity of protective measures. As such, I urge the board to continue the mask mandate for students in K through 8 and to extend it to all high schools as well. After all, even vaccinated high school students often have younger siblings who are not yet eligible to be vaccinated. Also, now that the Pfizer vaccine has received full FDA approval for those 16 and older, I ask the board to strongly consider requiring vaccinations for all staff and students 16 and older. All students in Colorado are already required to be vaccinated against other infectious diseases. Now that the vaccine's fully approved, it's time to include COVID-19 on that list. I know this has been a try and stressful time for everyone. It's not easy for anybody. Thank you for your service and for having the courage to stand up and do the right thing for our kids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Way. I live at 1738 Bonnie Drive, Loveland, Colorado, 80538. Phone number is 562-756-5164. I'm a parent of three different children at three different schools in Thompson School District, and I personally would like to thank you for mandating the masks and keeping not only my family but my community safe. I have a child who is high-risk, so he needs extra precautions. So, once again, I just want to thank you for doing what's right and following the science. I'm sorry for the craziness of some of the outbursts in the last board meeting, and I hope this one goes well.
My name is Michael Kadraby, and my address is 1858 Monarch Circle, Loveland, Colorado. The topic is "Thank You." Hello, Thompson Board of Education. I was at the last Board of Education meeting, and I do not envy the difficult position you all have trying to cater to such a diverse and spirited group of constituents. It cannot be easy. I would just like to let you know that as a parent of a kindergartner in your district, I truly appreciate the hard choices you have had to make so far this school year to try to keep our kids safe, and I feel that many other parents feel the same. Please don't let the vocal minority get you down or make you doubt yourself. You are doing the right thing, and we will all get through this. Thank you all again.
That was the last public comment?
Thank you, Matt. All right, that takes us to the end of public comment. We're going to move on to Item 6, which is the Action Consent Agenda. I will go ahead and read all those, and we will take those up as a whole, and if anybody on the board wants to remove an item, just let me know, please. Thank you. Item 6.1, Approval of Personnel